Good evening. It's Tuesday, January 11th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. My name is Joe Baker and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present this evening. District One, Councilmember Cindy Sines.
Here.
District Two, Councilmember John Rodriguez.
Here.
District Three, Councilmember Chris Parker is unable to join us this evening and is absent. District Four, Councilmember James Douglas.
Here.
District Five, Councilmember Sandra Schultz is unable to join us this evening. Three members of the city council are present and we have a quorum present this evening. I would like to welcome Pastor Trey Hill from the Word Fellowship Church, who will lead us in prayer. If everyone would please rise for the prayer and remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you here this evening. We thank you that you're good and that your mercy endures from everlasting to everlasting. We thank you for this great city of Kennedy. We thank you for the leaders that are here this evening. We ask you that you would give them the wisdom, the knowledge, the understanding to make the correct decision for this city. We thank you for this, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Hill. We really appreciate you being here this evening. Next item on the agenda is number five, citizen comment. Mr. Lynn, do we have any citizens who have signed up for comments this evening?
No, sir. We should not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time? If not, we will move along to item number six, proclamation Frontier Pharmacy. Mr. Frankie, I see you're here this evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll miso catas to step forward, I have a proclamation that I would like to read. Long time no see. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here. You have to stand right here. Read this proclamation. Whereas the business community of the city of Kennedy is crucial to the city's economic health, and whereas the revenue generated by the business community allows the city to provide services that positively affect the quality of life for its residents, and whereas the jobs created by the business community support the quality of life that Kennedy residents enjoy, and whereas the business community provides valuable support that fosters and encourages public-private partnerships through institutions such as the Kennedy Chamber of Commerce, the public schools in the community, and others, and whereas the city values its existing business community and commits to making every effort to retain that strong economic base, and whereas the city recognizes and appreciates The Senate of the State of Texas Proclamation Number 148, recognizing Randy Garza for 22 the dedication, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit displayed by Frontier Pharmacy. years of service to the city of Kennedy as a mayor and councilman. David Frankie, owner, opened Frontier Pharmacy on January 1st, 1979, and has been an integral Unfortunately, Mr. Garza is unable to join us this evening, but I'd like to read the proclamation and we will make sure he receives this at a later time, a later date. part of downtown Kennedy on Main Street for 43 years. Now therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, publicly commend Frontier Pharmacy Senate Proclamation Number 148. Whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize Randy Garza for his and hereby proclaim January 2022 as Frontier Pharmacy Small Business of the Month. outstanding service as mayor of Kennedy and as a member of the Kennedy City Council, Mr. Frankie, congratulations. and whereas for 22 years Randy Garza has consistently provided Kennedy citizens with
I appreciate it so much.
valuable civic leadership, and whereas over the course of his tenure as mayor and as If you don't mind, here, if you want to get a photo of him.
Yeah. I invite everybody to come down to Frontier Pharmacy.
a councilmember, Randy Garza has devoted considerable time and energy to meeting the
I'm putting it on display and we can have photos down there.
needs of the city's residents, he has played an important role in maintaining the quality That sounds great. That sounds great.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
of the city's infrastructure and in upgrading technological operations at City Hall.
All right.
One of his top priorities has been lowering city property taxes and water rates, which has led to lower taxes during his four consecutive years as mayor. And whereas, in addition to his work in city government, Randy Garza continues to serve his community by volunteering with Little League Baseball and by serving as a member of the Parks and Recreation Board, and whereas, an exemplary public servant, Randy Garza is respected and admired by his colleagues and area citizens, and he is truly deserving of recognition for his many achievements. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Senate of the State of Texas hereby commend Randy Garza on his exceptional service to the people of Kennedy as a councilmember and as mayor of the city, and extend to him best wishes for continued success in all his endeavors, and be it further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation be prepared for him as an expression of esteem from the Texas Senate. And this is signed by Texas Senator Judith Zaffarian. So congratulations to Mayor Garza and we'll make sure he receives this copy of this proclamation. Item number nine on the agenda, we have another presentation. Senate of Texas Proclamation Number 149, recognizing Ken Riley for 15 years of service to the city of Kennedy as councilman. Mr. Riley is also unable to join us, but I would like to read his proclamation as well. Senate Proclamation Number 149. Whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize Kenneth Riley for his outstanding service as a member of the Kennedy City Council, and whereas Kenneth Riley was elected more than 15 years ago to the Kennedy City Council, and he has consistently provided Kennedy citizens with valuable civic leadership, and whereas over the course of his tenure on the council, Kenneth Riley has devoted considerable time and energy to meeting the needs of the city's residents, he has played an important role in maintaining the quality of the city's infrastructure by helping to plan for street improvements, sewer plant modifications, and water system enhancements. He has been involved with a wide variety of city projects and has supported plans to pave and seal code streets, revamp underground infrastructure, and overhaul the waste treatment system, and whereas Mr. Riley has also been a leader in the city's financial management. His work to secure a quality bond rating led to low interest rates on loans to fund public infrastructure improvements and to keeping a low tax rate. And whereas, an exemplary public servant, Kenneth Riley is respected and admired by his colleagues and area citizens, and he is truly deserving of recognition for his many accomplishments. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Senate of the State of Texas hereby commend Kenneth Riley on his exceptional service to the people of Kennedy as a member of the Kennedy City Council, and extend to him best wishes for continued success in all his endeavors, and be it further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation be prepared for him as an expression of esteem from the Texas Senate, signed by Texas Senator Judith Zaffarian. Congratulations to Mr. Riley. We'll make sure that he receives this as well. Item number 10 on the agenda, presentation, the Senate of the State of Texas Proclamation Number 150, recognizing Felipe Lial for 18 years of service to the city of Kennedy as councilman. I see Mr. Lial is here this evening. Senate Proclamation Number 150. Whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize Felipe Lial for his outstanding service as a member of the Kennedy City Council, and to congratulate him on his retirement, and whereas Felipe Lial represented Districts Two and Three on the Kennedy City Council for 18 years, and he consistently provided Kennedy citizens with valuable civic leadership, and whereas during his membership on the council, Felipe devoted considerable time and energy to helping to meet the needs of the city's residents, he played an important role in improving the city's infrastructure through his support of a variety of projects, including the creation of a new water lines. He worked diligently to uphold the standards of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, and he focused on revamping Kennedy's water and sewer department while keeping taxes low for citizens, and whereas Felipe Lial also served his community as a volunteer fireman for 20 years and as a Karnes County Emergency Technician. His exceptional service on behalf of the residents of the city of Kennedy has had a positive impact on the lives of many, and whereas, an exemplary public servant, Felipe Lial is respected and admired by his colleagues and area citizens, and he is truly deserving of recognition for his many accomplishments. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Senate of the State of Texas hereby commend Felipe Lial on his valuable service to the people of Kennedy as a member of the Kennedy City Council, and extend to him best wishes for continued success in all his endeavors, and be it further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation be prepared for him as an expression of esteem from the Texas Senate, signed by Texas Senator Judith Zaffarian. Lial, thank you for your service. Item on the 11, item 11 on the agenda is another presentation, but the recipient is here, but we expect that he may be here a little later this evening, so I'm just going to push this item back into the agenda. At a later point, we'll bring it back again, should he find a way to join us this evening. So that brings us to item number 12, departmental reports. And the first report on the list is the Public Works Report. Mr. Lynn?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, residents of Kennedy. Before we bring up the Public Works person to give the report, I wanted to announce that we had a change in leadership in the Public Works Department last month. Mr. Higgins left the city of Kennedy to go take a similar position in another municipality within state, and in his leaving, our Assistant Public Work Director Gary Perades has moved into that role and has taken over those duties effective immediately. So at this particular point in time, I want to introduce to the city council, the mayor, the residents, your new Public Works Director, Gary Perades. Gary, come on out.
Welcome, Gary.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Lynn, you have in your packets there the report that we put together for the month of December 2021, and if you have any questions on it, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you. I'm going to go over the summary that kind of covers all of these. We had a resignation that was turned in on December the 9th from Cody Bryan. He is no longer with us. And then Jerry Higgins turned in his resignation on December the 10th. Maria Urutia, who was our warehouse attendant, she submitted her resignation on December We sent Mr. Lynn information on water restrictions, also getting information on equipment and the fusion machine that we were looking at. We sent email to Monk Incorporated concerning the aerator invoices for TCQ. They were wanting the actual invoices, and so we had to get with the contractor so we could get copies of the actual invoices to send to TCQ. That's been taken care of and they're good with that. We had conducted some interviews for Public Works employees. We are still, we haven't been able to bring anybody on just yet, but it's in the works. And then we've completed a separation notice for Juan Benavides per City Secretary Ruben Holmes. Some of the projects that are underway, we have the eight-inch water line extension that goes up, is coming across country there and is going up 181 where the apartments are going to go in there. That is, I want to say it's probably about 80% completed. I've been kind of looking over them and they seem to be doing a very good job with that. Loma Alta, up here, we were looking at, we're still waiting on a bore going across, what is that, 72, I think it is. And then the other bore over on Karnes, that bore has been completed. They still have not done the tie-ins, but the bore is in, the pipe is across. It's all laid, we just need to do the tie-ins. And so I'm working with the contractors on that. We're going to get that accomplished here, getting completed here pretty quick. We did, I did meet with SLP contractor on the project sites at Karnes and Loma Alta and, you know, kind of discuss what we needed to do there. I attended a pre-construction meeting with Six S Engineering for the CDPG grant to replace the sewer line on Livock and Waco, and that went well since. Went out to bids on that. TCQ, we sent TCQ an update. We sent them updated information on the set for the wastewater treatment plant Phase Two, and part of that was again that they weren't in those actual invoices and we got that to them. And we also sent TCQ quarterly report for violation extension, and they just kind of gave them an update and they're okay with our extension there. We worked the Christmas in Kennedy event, which, in my first event, I thought it went very well. I really enjoyed myself and I hope to continue working those every year because I like that thing. We replaced the meter at the HEB gas station. Apparently it wasn't registering well, so we had to have the dials and the readers changed out. We got that all calibrated and everything's running, working as it should be. And also a two-inch meter over at the Hampton Inn. We got a call about some graffiti on our monitoring well, signage. We went out and checked and apparently we had that damaged there, and then we have some lines that go across Escondido Creek and they kind of graffitied that too, but it wasn't bad. So we're trying to get together and price again, get that removed. And then we got a low pressure call over on Cottonwood area, and apparently what happened was one of our PRBs had locked up and didn't open like it should, and so it was airlocked is basically what it was. We went in there, plugged it and got it off. Everything's working, working normal now. We had a training event at the Juan Cruz Training Center. We held the monthly Texas Water Utility Association meeting that most of our operators attend for CEU hours. I actually did the presentation and we had a meal and then we had door prizes and it was good. And then the rest of the report is those eight pages that follow. We have the Public Works Activity Report we just read to you. We have the water MOR from the Oro's Plant that's prepared by Hector Salinas. We have the water loss report that's prepared by me. The water state restrictions, which was prepared by me. The field operations report or the service orders, which was prepared by me. The wastewater treatment plant report or the MOR is prepared by Mark Arcea. And then we had one SSO, and that's also the wastewater plant superintendent prepared that. And that's about all of my report. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Thank you for your report. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Continuing under item number 12, departmental reports, we have Police Chief Report. Chief Ash?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So this was a little bit longer than I normally do. I'm trying to do two or three minutes to get out of here, but I did the year-end issue. But let's start off with our animal control, just to highlight our animal control. We had some issues out at Galway Park with, during the Christmas lights, the javelinas were tearing up the lights, running through the lights at night, so our animal control was able to go out and trap, they trapped 11 of them and moved them to a different location. With javelinas, you have to move them and release them again. They're still protected, so, but we were able to get that done. You can see the numbers on their animal control. They had 36 calls, picked up 20 dogs and 16 cats. We also picked up one armadillo and two possums and one deer. We wrote 15 citations, or I'm sorry, 17 citations and 15 warnings for last month. We're still having a little issue with the shelter. They still have, don't have a lot of room and so we're still kind of struggling trying to get dogs moved over there, but, so some of our dogs stay in our shelter longer than we, than we would like, but the guys do a pretty good job of keeping, taking care of those dogs that they're taking care of. For the police department, I included, this is a year-end review. It's something I kind of wanted to do last year, I just didn't, you know, COVID, I played everything on COVID. But I wanted to try to give you an overall view of the police department, what we did last year. And on the front page, it just shows the, how we're made up now. We have the chief and we have lieutenant now, which is my number two. He runs all the patrol section, and then we have our investigations and as well as animal control. It kind of gives you an idea of the breakdown of how we're put together over there. And as we start moving through some of the big items for the year, of course, I don't know if you heard me mention this, but we were recognized this year, I think I may have mentioned that a couple hundred times this year, but we received our recognition program this year, our award this year, and that was in this room, I think in February, and then, February, yeah, or March actually. And then at the chief's conference in April, we received our certificate from them. We added a couple of security updates. This was something that the city manager had talked to me about a couple of times. We did the, we added the call boxes out there at Escondido Parkway. There's four of them out there now. They're emergency call boxes. They're out there and working. We checked it today and everything seems to be working. We also added the internet exchange area. I'm not sure if everybody knows that we have that, but next to the police department on the Tilden side, we have a sign that says, "This is the safe location to do internet exchange." There is a camera recording everything there, so if people want to meet to exchange what they're selling on the internet or by phone, they can meet there. We also added our new tool there. We added the drone this year. We have our first drone. It's a smaller one. We have one pilot right now. We're trying to train our second pilot so we have a backup for him. And then hoping as we go along the years, we'll get a bigger, better drones with IR on it, infrared and all that kind of stuff, but this is a good starting drone for it. And that was purchased through a grant that we got from Conoco, so I'm very thankful to them. Next couple of pages have some outreach, what we call community outreach, some different events we did last year for our community outreach, job fair at the high school. We do, we hand out child ID kits. I don't know if you all have seen these, but little kits that you give to the parents and they put together, so if their child's ever missing, they give us the kit, has all their fingerprints, DNA, what they look like, all that in one kit. We hand those out. We had our big event there on July 4th, as well as our National Night Out event as well, which was actually turned out really well before the new wave of COVID hit us. So those were our events for the year. We did make a change in our command structure. You see on page here, we created the lieutenant slot, which was, we really kind of needed to have that number two person, so it goes chief and then lieutenant's the number two. So when I'm not there. Sergeant Elizondo was promoted to lieutenant. He is one of the longest-serving officers we have at Kennedy. He's been a sergeant for many years. He's also our program director for our recognition program. He works very hard, has a lot of irons in his fire. Depend on him for a lot of things, and so we're very happy to move him to lieutenant. Training and education, this is something that has been a focus of ours since I've been here, trying to get the training. You see, we had over 1,000 hours of training in 2021. Included in that, we trained an instructor for our baton training, so I don't have to send people out to other schools. We have our own house instructors. We can do that every year now. We can recertify with baton. We also have instructors for our chemical dispenser weapons that we use, so we can do that in-house. Trained a couple of instructors on our rolling machine that we're starting, we're going to do this year on some physical fitness stuff, we're going to be working on. I got that done. We also trained two new field training officers and two new officers negotiators as well, so I have three negotiators down the department, so that can be really helpful to us. Also, myself and another sergeant went to the training on the Crime Free Hotel program, which I think I mentioned last month. We're going to start implementing, we start training on that in January. I think I had my first classes. And that's a program to try to work with the hotels in town to make them more safe and secure, and we have several hotels that are just starting programs, so we're excited about that. Certifications, this was also a big push for us. Police officers are like many other occupations. You have different levels of certification. You start off as a basic police officer, you move up to intermediate, advanced, you know, then master. And the way you move up is by training hours and by time in service. I know a lot of officers that have the time in service but don't have the training and they've never moved up in their certifications, so this was an emphasis for us. As you can see there, we did have, we had two officers move from their basic officer to intermediate. We have four officers move from intermediate to advanced, and then we have three officers move from their advanced to a master police officer, and that's the highest level we get to is master. So we're real excited about that. It's something we've been focused on as well. I also added in here my yearly community survey I did. Y'all can see the numbers on there. A lot of the numbers are a little Included in that, we trained an instructor for our baton training so I don't have to send people out to other schools. We have our own house instructors. We can do that every year now. We can recertify with baton. We also have instructors for our chemical dispenser weapons that we use, so we can do that in-house. Trained a couple of instructors on our rolling machine that we're starting. We're going to do this year on some physical fitness stuff that we're going to be working on. I got that done. We also trained two new field training officers and two new officers negotiators as well. So I have three negotiators down in the department. So that can be really helpful to us. Also, myself and another sergeant went to the training on the Crime Free Hotel Program, which I think I mentioned last month. We're going to start implementing, we start training on that in January. I think I had my first classes. And that's a program to try to work with the hotels in town to make them more safe and secure. We have several hotels that are just starting programs, so we're excited about that. Certifications, this was also a big push for us. Police officers are like many other occupations. You have different levels of certification. You start off as a basic police officer and you move up to intermediate, advanced, you know, then master. And the way you move up is by training hours and by time in service. I know a lot of officers that have the time in service but don't have the training and they've never moved up in their certification. So this was an emphasis for us. As you can see there, we did have, we had two officers move from their basic officer to intermediate. We have four officers move from intermediate to advanced. And then we had three officers move from their advanced to a master police officer. And that's the highest level we get to is master. So we're really excited about that. It's something we've been focused on as well. I also added in here my yearly community survey I did. Y'all can see the numbers on there. My numbers are a little lower turnout this year than last year, but the amount of returns I have, but the numbers are consistent. You can kind of see across the board if you look, I won't go through every line on it, but we're trending in the right direction on all of them. Community engagement seems to be up. People feel we engage with them more, they trust us more. That's continued on an upward trend. I'd like to get that number where it says, are you satisfied with the police department? I'd like to get that in the 90s, you know, but we're in the 80s right now, but it's been going up every year. So we're happy with that. The interesting line on that one, I think is the most interesting to me, is the last one. Has your opinion changed about the police department in the year? And you've seen that number is kind of baked in now. People have their opinion of us and it's not changing much. But that's kind of being expected, you know? They get, people think what they think. But anyway, so you have a copy of that. Included also in here are goals for last year. Each year I tried to, in January, I tried to set goals for our department, four or five things we want to do for the year. This is our, the goals that we had. And then underneath A, B, and C show you what we did to achieve those goals. We did the drone program. Physical fitness, we're starting on that. We've actually started that in January this year. We're going to be working more on that on our wellness program, negotiation team. We're trying to do some changes to our paperwork and reduce paper. We've had some success with that, but not as much as I'd like. But not all of it has to do with us. We have to deal with outside entities as well. Our K-9 officer, I think, didn't really mention that, but that is one of our things we wanted to do last year. It kind of got pushed into January, but my officer goes back for training Monday. He'll go back and finish up two more weeks and then he should be done. So at the end of January, he should be back with our K-9 and he should be on the street. So and then of course, we also wanted to do the challenge coins. I gave you all one, I think there were two ago, and gave you all a copy of one of our challenge coins. So that was something we were trying to get done. The next couple of reports, I'm not going to go over a lot of. If you really want to look at it, you can. The Use of Force Analysis. This is a report I'm required to do each year for recognition. Talks about how many uses of force we used. Overall number, we used 14, we used force 14 different times over the year. But if you start looking at how many times, there were a total of 6,242 calls per service, basically where we interacted with the public. And out of that, we used force 14 times. So you do the math, that's 0.000 something percent of the time that we deal with the public that force is used. Our use of force is extremely low for our contacts. Also, I think part of the reason that it's a little higher is we changed, last year we had to change the way we reported. We reported some things we didn't used to report as use of force. And so that kind of made me pumped up a little bit. But overall, our use of force is very low. Also, on our use of force, we only had one complaint last year of unnecessary or excessive force. It was a gentleman that we detained in handcuffs thinking he was involved in something. And then we determined later he was not and he was released and he filed a complaint. But that's really the only complaint I had on use of force. We also have our pursuit analysis report in there. We only had one pursuit last year. We really kind of discourage pursuits. Pursuits are dangerous. They're, most of the time, not necessary. So we really discourage them by policy. But we did have one and the officer started pursuit, when the person started driving in unsafe manner, he got out of it himself, which he should do. He just called it off and left. So that's the only one we had last year, which was the one. We did have one or two pursuits that came into Kennedy from other agencies that we don't get involved in, will block streets for them or that kind of thing. But we don't necessarily get involved in pursuit. And then we have our accident injury analysis. Again, only had one injury this year. Officer pick a radio up off the table and tear his shoulder. No idea. But it was just one of those freak things that happened. But that was our only injury for the year, so, which is really good. The last one I put, or next I put, I just put a little, I wanted to put a little thing in our drug arrest. This was another emphasis for us. When I first was hired, this was something that I don't think anybody here was here when I was hired on the board. But one emphasis they really wanted me to focus on was drug arrest and dealing with drugs in Kennedy. As you can see, we've made quite an impact. We seized over $100,000 worth of drugs last year, $106,000 approximately that we seized. We made 90 arrests for drugs or other organized crime cases. We also seized about 60, a little over $60,000 in cash, two vehicles, 25 game machines and one building. And that all came out of a game room that we closed down and raided, which was the last game room in Kennedy. We no longer have any game rooms operating in the city of Kennedy, that I'm aware of. If they are, they're doing it under the table or we don't know about them. But that was the last one we had and we now closed all the game rooms in Kennedy. So we also seized 17, or seven firearms, including one that was actually stolen here in Kennedy that we were able to recover. So we have dedicated one officer to investigating drug cases. So he works on that. So it's really kind of helped us a lot. Once we get the K-9 in, I think that will also help our patrol officers find more drugs and stops as well. So I think that number should go up. I had my daughter help me with this one, these little charts and graphs there. So she came up, worked on it. Just to give you an idea of some of the crime trends, because I do get those questions, what is crime like in Kennedy? As you can see, per net, just like the national crime rates, our assaults are up in '20 and '21. That is a national trend. I blame that on COVID. People are locked up together too long and they conflict. But our property crimes have dropped a little bit and are leveled off. And our property crimes have been stable for many years. I see assaults go up and down a little bit. But that trend of assaults going up is not just us, it's around the country. You can see our traffic stops have continued to go up. The three years I've been here, we've been working on that. We went 2019 and 2020 was more, 2021 was even more. I think we were at 30, 3150, I think it was last year for our traffic stops. So you can see those numbers are going up. But at the same time, our use of force is down and our complaints are down. So our traffic stops are up, but our complaints are going down. So that's the right way. You can see our complaints went from, I think it was, I forget the first year, five and then, or seven and then four and then I think three this year. So the numbers are going down the right way. That kind of gives you a little trend. I added the year end stats if you want to see the total for the departments, all the calls for the year. But you can see we had a total of 6,242 calls for service. That was a lot of calls for the department. Our citations were up. Traffic stops, I mean, you know, 30, well, you know, 31 here, 3,144, just a little over 3,100 traffic stops last year. So the guys are staying very active. Our building checks were up. We made almost 1,500 building checks last year. So the guys are staying really active. And then the last parts of this, I added my racial profile report that I'm required to give you every year. I was able to get it done. I filed electronically today to T-Clo. Had some issue with their website, but I think I finally got it in and filed completely. The very last part, if you look at the numbers, if you actually start kind of digging into the numbers, the question always is, are we stopping one race more than others or is it out of whack? So on the last part, on the very last page, it has an actual breakdown of Kennedy, the population in Kennedy and the percentages. So you can look and say, for example, the population in Kennedy, we have less than half a percent of Alaskan or Native Americans and we only stop 1% of our stops. So you can see the numbers are there. Where you get down into the higher numbers, our Hispanic or Latino population is about 50, almost 57% in Kennedy and our traffic stops were 56 and a half percent Hispanic. So you kind of see the numbers are tracking right along whites, 34% of our population, or 34% of our tickets were white and 36% of our population is white. So you can kind of see that our numbers were tracking along pretty well with our population. What you're looking for there is, are there numbers that stand out that, whoa, you know, we have 9% of our population is black, 20% of your stops were, right? That make you start to think. So I don't see any issues with our numbers. They look pretty, we're tracking pretty long with our, with the population of Kennedy. But that was filed today as required by law and I'm required by law to give that to you as well. So I will cut it off there unless you have questions. I know there was a lot to throw at you.
Thank you for the report, Chief. Very detailed. I'm glad to see all this information. Looks like things are going very well. Whenever I run out in the community, I get a lot of compliments on your officers. They're courteous, respectful and professional and that's exactly what we want to see here. So thank you for all your hard work. Any questions from the council for the chief?
Chief, I spoke briefly to city manager Lynn this past week. A little issue at the end of Houston Street and Truck Route 72. I had some citizens tell me about excessive 18-wheelers coming up in that area.
At Houston?
Yes. You know how, and I blame that on mainly GPS. Because what GPS is doing to the truck drivers is telling them to go around the truck route, which they follow, you know, the knuckleheads that come through here. But the majority go around and if they have a delivery at Ashland or at Ocot, well, the GPS is telling them to go through Houston Street, you see? So they're coming up Houston Street. But like I told Mr. Lynn, we don't have a sign down there. Mr. Lynn said he was going to get with you, so I just wanted to mention here. We don't have a sign down there saying, no trucks. You know, so in a way, it's our fault that we don't have a sign down there, you know? Because if they're coming and the GPS is telling them to turn in there and they see that sign, oh, I can't go in there. I'm going to get, it's the neighborhood.
Yeah, we get that a lot. My GPS told me, well, you know, you still got to watch the signs.
You know, and you still have to, it's up to the truck driver. The decision is the truck driver, you know? But I just want to do as much as we can to divert them from going up Houston Street.
Let me check off, I'll get with the street department and dispatch the manager.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Not the chief, thank you for your report. Continuing on agenda item number 12, departmental reports. The next on the list is the Building Department and Code Compliance Reports. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. In your bag, we'll have the December monthly report. As you can see, for the month of December, we did, we're kind of down on permits and inspections. We did have a surge toward the end of the month on gas inspections. So we did pick up on that. So we did have 22 service calls for the month of December for permits and inspections. We did collect $884.05 for the month of December. One thing we've been consistent on is the collection station. We've had 41 disposals for the month of December. We're still trying to get the message out to people, to the citizens, that these, the collection station is still available. We're trying to work with the citizens. When we actually sent them a violation letter, well, they ask, first thing they ask, well, where can I dispose of it? One thing is not on the curbside. So we try to, we give them a permit, we try to have them go to the collection station. So that's been pretty consistent for us in collection station. But for the month of December, for our code, I mean, for inspections, we were down a little bit on that, but we anticipate that in January. And February, it's going to pick up somewhat, maybe due to the holidays and, you know, maybe money being a little scarce. We hoping that that picks up for January and February. One thing that we are going, we are, our department is planning, in April, we're anticipating to have another tire roundup in April. We're ironing out the details as far as what the contractor that did it the last night. So we're hoping that around April 22nd, in conjunction with Earth Day, we're going to, we're anticipating and having another tire roundup for the citizens. We're going to put that out there on our webpage and Facebook and hopefully we'll have a better turnout this coming year. So again, April 22nd is actually Earth Day, but we'll be having it on the 23rd, which is on a Saturday. It'll probably be from, probably be the same time from 8 to 12. So we're going to assure the council that we're going to get the message out there and hopefully get the citizens to come and dispose of their unwanted tires. One thing we're going to do this year as well, we're going to, for that event, we're going to ask for sponsors this year. A couple of years ago, we had local organizations and businesses sponsor that event. That offset the cost a little bit somewhat, you know, if we have sponsors. So we're looking at two sponsors, maybe possibly three, that might even offset the total cost of this event. So that'll help the taxpayers and citizens of Kennedy. So we're looking at that as well. With that being said, we basically, hopefully going around the neighborhood with additional staff hopefully coming this year, we're going to go and hit the neighborhoods a little harder. We're going to try to not, not, we're going to try to enforce what we can, but at the same time, we're going to try to let citizens know. We're going to try to educate the citizens on what our plan is and trying to do with the city, cleaning up the neighborhoods and again, that, once we enforce, we want to educate the citizens on what we want them to do. We want them to participate and meet us halfway. If we can do that, we can clean up this town, you know, quite a bit. So education is, educating the community is very important in this department. So we're looking at, hopefully in 2022, we're going to hopefully try to get this town cleaned up and the neighborhoods and have people participate in what we're trying to do and educate them as well. So with that being said, is there any other questions as far as the Code Compliance Report?
Any questions from the council? Continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Continuing under agenda item number 12, departmental reports. Next is Streets and Parks Report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As far as the month of December, the street crew conducted hand patching and grading in total of five days, using 15.5 cubic yards of type D asphalt and 10 and a quarter yards of Patch Pro material. Also patching 198 potholes during the four day stretch during the month, using 24.4 cubic yards of type D asphalt. Total amount of D asphalt used was 39.9 and also 10.2 of Patch Pro material. Crews performed base repair. This was something a little different from what they've done in the past. Went in and kind of did a remove and replace type job in an area of where we removed the base and the pavement that was faded and whatnot. Went in there at the bottom and laid out some Portland cement to absorb some of the moisture and then mixed base with the Portland and kind of did a rehab project in that little area. So they had 6.8 cubic yards of base, mixed in with six bags of Portland cement for stabilization, removed 6.8 cubic yards of roadway material. It ended up being fairly successful. The guys found out a new way of kind of doing some of the major repair on the base. So it's something that they're, they've, they kind of enjoyed, something a little bit different from what they're accustomed to and doing with just normal patching. So they'll continue with this trend. Also swept a total of seven days, mowed and weed trimmed 18 roadways during the month. The crew worked on mowing and shredding. They finished up the airport two more days this month. No, they were in there for two days in November at the end and then went to doing some of the stuff for the Christmas in Kennedy. So finished it up this month with two days. Crew replaced four signs and installed four new stop signs as well. As far as construction drainage, they worked on drainage for two days and then as well as cleaning up some curb and gutter areas for two days, removing 28 cubic yards of silt. Replaced six trash carts, delivered one new trash cart and removed or picked up three broken trash carts during the month. Crew also collected all the trash out of the downtown receptacles on nine different Crew also collected all the trash out of the downtown receptacles on nine different days. They performed preventive maintenance two days during the month, servicing the equipment in one way or another. Also worked out completing the setting up of Christmas in the park for two days and then worked during those, during those days that we had the event going, worked nineteen days out there turning the lights on and off throughout the trail. That's, that's my street report.
Joe, who do we, what street do we have scheduled for rebuilding right now? What's our, on our street projects?
As far as rebuilding?
Like we did Graham Road and...
Right now, we just have the five roads that Joe designated as far as for the milling fill, and then we're working on the chip seal list. It's, some of the roads that don't need major road, road construction on them, we'll probably chip seal. But there's a couple of roadways that we're looking at to where we're gonna blade asphalt over the top, let them cure out for about a month and a half or so before we start that chip seal process. And we're, like I said, we're just looking at different roadways, trying to get one in each district to where we get them five chip sealed roads. We're gonna work a little bit harder on that section of Capano. There's a section on Capano between Goliat and DeWitt that is in dire need of maintenance and actually reconstruction from the drainage all the way across through the roadway. I'm not sure how many years ago that thing was, was kind of constructed, 'cause I remember growing up, it was a dirt road for many years, and then they paved it at one point. But over years, it's kind of diminished and we've lost the edges on both sides. And then from the amount of the water that runs through there when it's coming off from the top of Goliat, you know, the hydraulic flow that goes through there is a lot for them culverts that we have in place. That's why we've got the erosion that we have in that area. So we're looking at kind of stair stepping it down in a ways to where we can slow down some of that hydraulic flow to where it just doesn't continuously just erode everything out. So we're gonna go in there and we're looking at, like I say, stair stepping it. So we'll, we'll put like baffles kind of in there to where we step it down to where it hits, kind of disperses to one side and then kind of to the other to kind of slow it down. Because right now, when it comes off of that hill, I mean, it's, it's coming down. I mean, and, you know, water brings a lot of force. I mean, if you, you've ever seen water fall in a river or whatnot, it doesn't take much. I mean...
Well, I'd like to see, I know the chip seal is good and that's a, you know, getting on it pretty fast, but I'd like to see one at least, I don't care, you know, where in town, you know, as long as we get one rebuilt like Graham Road, you know, that we could multitask on that, you know, to have that one going. And we've got East Main done, got Graham Road done. I wanna continue that, that pattern, you know, at least with, you know, with one that's being reconstructed from base up.
Okay.
You know, and you have the list, you and Mr. Lynn, you know, like I said, it doesn't have to be District Two. I just wanna see, you know, one of them.
And what we would look for is one of the roads that is really in dire need of repair. So I mean, we'll hit one road and we'll just pick out that one and, like I said, we'll go in there and we'll just kind of do a total rehab on it.
Yeah, rebuild, because everybody is very happy with East Main. Everybody, I've gotten nothing but compliments on Graham, East Main, you know, I wanna continue that trend. I don't wanna, you know, that we got those done and then, you know, we're sitting back, let's...
And that's why we're going through the program with the, with the milling inlay and also the chip seal program, 'cause we wanna build the roadways to where we can sustain them for quite a while. If we can chip seal five at a time, five per year, statistics...
That's a street program, yeah.
Yeah, statistics will show you, on highways normally the life is anywhere between seven and ten years. We don't have the traffic that the highways do, but in the residential areas, we can see that last fifteen, twenty years. But on top of that, not only are we gonna maintain that, that surface treatment, but we can actually add to that and go back over the top with the overlay later on.
Make it last longer.
You know, as, the other thing that we have to look for and make sure we have in check is also the infrastructure underneath. My deal is, is I don't like to put a new surface on top on something that we constantly have leaks on or backups or whatever, 'cause it, it just looks bad, not only to, do I not like it, but then the public. You're sitting there looking at a roadway that you just completely refinished and you're already putting a hole in it, you know, and it kind of defeats the purpose of going in there and doing something like that. So when we can get some of that infrastructure kind of completed, even if it's like a block-to-block section, you know, that, that would help out to where we can do a surface treatment. Surface treatments are wonderful, you know, everybody sees what's on top and it's the greatest thing in the world. So what's underneath is more vital sometimes than what's on top, you know?
Yeah, because your road is gonna fail from the bottom. It's not gonna fail on the top.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna, it's gonna fail from the bottom. And we've, and I've had this discussion with Mr. Lynn, we've got at least three or four good candidates with good infrastructure on it with, you know, Houston Street is one of them, has curbing also.
Yes.
So, you know, from curb to curb, like Graham Road, you know, I mean, Graham Road had to be added, you know, some, in some places, you know?
And Houston, Houston Street is one that's on the list to have the milling inlay.
And then we have Maytag also, that the infrastructure's good over there. We don't have no curbing on Maytag, but, you know, it is what it is, you know? And Murphy's Law is always out there. We, we just have to construct them and we gotta leak, see? So, but I understand your point, you know, that we have to look at everything.
Yes, sir, and Maytag as well is on the list to be late, and Mr. Lynn and I have discussed the possibility of going in there and putting some type of concrete ribbons, kind of similar to what we have on Pulling and on, on the other part of Graham Road, you know, just to try to preserve some of that roadway. Because if we don't have anything for it to stay in between, sometimes you're gonna get that mat that's gonna shift and push.
Yep.
So if we have something that can kind of hold it and stabilize it, it would work ideally. That's something that's in the works. And the other thing is, on some of these roadways that we wanna put some ribbons on and stuff, the residents use the whole length of the road to park their vehicles. So some areas, you know, where we're gonna put the concrete ribbon, there might end up being a drop-off. And that's gonna be something that we work on as well, is once we get the concrete ribbons in, we get some of the roadway taken care of. I wanna work on the drainage before we do that, 'cause if you don't have the drainage, you're gonna end up losing the road eventually anyways. So that, the drainage is, is one of the key components as well to maintaining your road.
Any other questions or comments from the council regarding the street department?
Mayor?
Yes?
Councilman Ruggis, I think the answer you're really looking for is that what we're gonna do is we're gonna focus on the first road being either from the District Four or the District Three selections by the council people. And then we're gonna look at gravitating maybe towards what I think you and I have discussed, the St. Mary's to Six, whatever y'all call it, Six Shooter Junction or whatever.
Six Point.
Thank you, Six Point, something like that. But the first, the first road's gonna come from one of those two because they are so heavily traveled and they are, they do have good infrastructure underneath them, so...
Yeah, and that's mainly what, you know, we're looking at, that as far as I'm concerned, you know, at one council, you know, that we, we're chipping away at it and I wanna, I wanna stay, keep focused on it.
We will.
You know, twenty twenty-two, because, I mean, a lot of people are, they're happy with, you know, this, this street over here by the park, you know, Pulling. Graham, they're tickled to death with that one, you know, they love it, you know? But where, things happen, you know? Nobody wanted to see Piccon dug up, but it happens and you gotta do it, you know? But the main thing is to get back in there and repair it as fast as you can, you know, because that way, you know, water is asphalt's worst enemy.
Yes, sir. And then just a note on Piccon, Leon and his crew are coming in to, to work on that one as well. It'll be serviced correctly here. Once we get the compaction on that trench that's kind of collapsed, we'll go ahead and, he's, he's coming in with his hot mix and they're gonna go ahead and take out that section that's bad and relay it.
If you've got on here, there's another one that I could wanna mention, put on your notes, Buena Vista Snookum Street. We did an excavation on Snookum as you're coming out to hit Flag Plant Road.
Yes.
And it's gotten pretty bad there. So, you know, if we wanna piggyback that on there, you know, because that's, we had had that horseshoe street done, and it was real pretty too, but, you know, for whatever we had to dig it up, we had to dig it up. And maybe we can add that in there to get it, get that hot mix on there.
Yes, sir.
Get it back to the level.
We'll get it taken care of.
Any other questions or comments regarding streets? I had one question, but I also wanted to say I agree with John, need to keep her foot on the gas in terms of street improvements. I'm hopeful that as the seasons change, your, your, our resources are not as occupied with mowing and weed eating and these types of activities, maybe we can refocus those into street improvements and try to keep, keep the momentum going.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate all your work though.
As far as parks, moving on to that report, on the sports complex, the park crew worked on dragging and sweeping the fields on four days, removing trash from the receptacles four days, weed trimming around the perimeter and edges of the fields eleven days. And the kit park and pavilion, they weed-trimmed and mowed fifteen days, picked up trash sixteen days, hauled off tree limbs and, and branches on two days, cleaned up the pavilion sixteen days. They also worked on tightening up some of the, some of the equipment that was there, you know, with the, with the weather, the kids and everything else, sometimes some of those, some of those bolts and nuts kind of getting loose. So they, they worked on tightening some of that stuff up on, on the playground equipment and that kit park as well for safety reasons. On the walking trail, bridge, basketball courts and gazebos, the crews mowed and weed-trimmed twelve days, picked up trash in the areas on nineteen days, also removed branches two days. They helped the street crew as well on stringing up some of the lights and the, well, they did their own on the gazebo, the bridge and the windmill, as well as at the pavilion, they strung up their lights and then helped us pretty much daily from some of the wildlife that run through there, the deer and the hogs that we have issues with, kind of, kind of put a hurting on us daily by knocking over the candy canes, the lights and stuff like that. So they worked on that on fifteen different days, just trying to go back and set up some of the displays as well. As far as the Nottingham Lot and the soccer fields, they mowed and weed-trimmed three days and picked up trash on three days. One thing I didn't have on here was, we had two rentals of the complex during the month. One was on the Tenth, which was a twelve U softball tournament that they, they had a full day out there. Teams out of, out of Corpus, there was a team out of McAllen and two teams out of Georgetown that came down, as well as one out of San Antonio and Houston. Fairly good little tournament. It was the first time I had talked to and used this one particular gentleman that has his own little select league that he runs, he's out of Corpus. And then also I had a rental for, a day rental for softball youth clinic. So they had, come with a few of the girls from the area that are playing college softball, they hosted a clinic for the kids to come in and they did drills, they used it for a full day. It was really successful. They had roughly, when I was out there, they had roughly about thirty to forty girls out there on the field.
Any comments or questions from the council regarding the parks department?
What is the status on naming the fields?
Fields are all named, it's just a matter of getting the signage up there.
What's the status on that?
Just a work in progress, 'cause we're also in the works of putting up flag poles on each field. We'll have four new flag poles in center field on each field. We've, we've gotta weld the legs back on the signs and probably make them a little bit taller than what they were on the fields before. So it's just a matter of getting a welder and getting that set up, so... But if we get everything good to go, I'd say it wouldn't be a problem to get them up within a month. The only, the only other thing that I had was whether we're gonna, what names we're gonna put on which one of the softball fields. 'Cause you had, you know, you have the Red Hole Shack. Well, the Hole Shack's gonna be a different type of little animal because the letters were actually welded on the top of the pole. We have all the letters. It's just a matter of getting somebody to probably put the bracket and everything up on top. But during the month as well, we had some windstorms that laid over the center field fence. So we, we have a quote that was given to us from the guy that had done the braces on the Hole Shack years ago. He came in and gave us a quote on what it would cost to straighten everything back out. And I'm trying to get him to move the fence to the right side of the poles as well and then put the braces on, so it's, it's a pretty healthy little estimate, you know, to have that replaced or to have it repaired. But as far as the signs are concerned, the rest of them, we just need to put them up. But then we've gotta see which, which field, whether we're gonna go with two and, and four, or two, three and four, which ones we want named what. 'Cause I don't think any of them have ever been, were ever dedicated to that person as far as the way it used to be.
Yeah. What about Johnny Bear Field? Is it gonna be, are they gonna be able to play on that ever?
Yes. All we have to do is, is get the corrugated metal for the top of the dugouts. Other than that, it is playable. They were allowed to play on it last year if they wanted. It was just with the complex being new, all we heard was everybody wanted to play on turf. I think other than my son, my son wanted to play on dirt, 'cause he wanted to get dirt.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since I've only been here about two years and we're talking naming fields and he's talking signs, could someone please illuminate me as to how the names were on the fields? 'Cause I presumed that the names were on the backstop.
No.
Were they, were they on like sign poles, like out in the outfield or something like that?
Yeah.
They were on, on the square tubing, some large square tubing on the outside of the, and I think on one of them, it was actually behind the backstop for Annadale Rogers.
Annadale was the softball field to the right. Wasso de la Garza field was in the back. And you could see the signs, whichever field you wanted to go to. Of course, the Red Hole Shack had its big sign, and then the Johnny Bear sign was over here. Those were the four names that council, previous councils approved to name those fields.
Okay.
And we did have one field years ago, even when I was little growing up, that we had the name on it, which was John Stewart Field as well.
Yeah.
That one was torn down years ago.
Yeah, that one, to make room for the, for the gazebo and all that area. The sign actually was still there before all of this construction was there. And, well, the Bill Chapman medal, that sign was there too. Because then, back then, there was gonna be that many baseball fields. But then those councils decided, no, we don't need that many baseball fields, you know? So they wanted to keep the dedications there.
So if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, when the complex was built, we razed three fields and built four. So we have three fields that are named and one field that is unnamed.
No, we took out two.
I thought we had the same amount of what we had.
Isn't the one...
But Johnny Bear...
Johnny Bear did not get torn down.
No, I mean, the clover leaf of fields. We have the Red Hole Shack, which is the baseball field. And then we have the, where the leopards play. And then we have the Wasso, and then we have the other field right across from, from Hole Shack.
The Little League?
The one's across the...
No, we have, we have four, we have four fields that we built. No, Johnny Bear Field is across. We have a total of five fields out there.
I think that was not named.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We razed three fields and built four in their place, and those three that we razed had names, so we have one field that's unnamed.
Well, that was the one that was demolished years ago, 'cause that was a minor league field, and that's when they demolished that one to make room for the two volleyball courts and where the gazebo's at.
Yep.
'Cause that wasn't there, we had a...
We had a minor league field, which was for the little bitty kids.
Well, where I'm going with this is, we've got three names in four fields, so the three names carry over to three of the four fields. I think that for the fourth field, if the council so desires, we should maybe let the residents of Kennedy, you know, maybe submit names they'd like to name that particular field and then go from there, unless you all wanted to pull over, would you say the name of that one field was?
John Stewart.
John Stewart, since it was already named by a council and we have an unnamed field. 'Cause we have an unnamed field, we're gonna have to address how to name it at some point.
That would be a good thing to get the community involved, you know, to take a survey, see what, see what they think. what, see what they think. You know, and have them, because it's not hard to do it. I mean, we send them a water bill every month.
Right.
Send the survey paper with them and let them, you know, we can give them some possibilities.
Right, and we can certainly make Mr. Stewart's name be one of those ones as well for the community to choose from.
Citizens decide what they want.
But if you tore it down, I mean, why wouldn't you rename it?
I guess because it was commissioned by prior city council. You'd want to honor their wishes maybe. I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just saying that we have three fields that are named and we have one field sitting there that needs a name, so.
If I was a Stewart family, I, I think I'd be a little upset. Now, I don't know, is it John Stewart, the funeral John Stewart?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. See, I'd be upset, but I don't know. Something to decide later.
Right, yeah, but I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the naming thing.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you for your report.
Thank you. Good evening.
Concealing under agenda item number 12, departmental reports, city secretary report. Ms. Mouse?
Mayor, council, bear with me if you can't hear me very well. I've had some allergy issues lately. I wanted to start out by letting you guys know that we have a job there scheduled for Friday, January 21st from 10 to 3 here in the auditorium. We have advertised this through Savvy Citizen and through our Facebook page and maybe put it out in the newspaper and on our website. Savvy Citizen has been fully implemented. Now that Savvy Citizen does have a calendar on our city website, if you go to the main primary page and scroll down, it is there. And anyone who does not have our Savvy Citizen can click on the items on the calendar and see what is available. Citizen enrollment has started and I do, I do ask that if you haven't already enrolled in it to please take a look at it. In addition to that, I've also set up ordinances and resolutions on our city website under our transparency page of the website. So since I'm just implementing this, we have 2001 to present moving forward. At some time, it'll be a project for me to try to obtain the older versions, resolutions and ordinances and have them put on the website as well for citizens and yourself to be able to retrieve older documentation if you're doing a research on something. For utility billing, we have seven new residential services and four disconnects on residentials. The Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department reported that they had seven calls, used 650 gallons of water and had eight personnel responding to calls. For the court report, court saw 157 defendants this last month and collected a total of 23,000 with a net to the city of 16,000. And I wanted to introduce Amy DeSharnes. She has been handling our event planning for the city for the last few months and I wanted her to come up and present her event planning portion of the city secretary report. Ms. Amy?
Good evening. Good evening. The City of Kennedy held the second annual Christmas event on Saturday, December 4th. I know that we've had questions about the lights on Main Street. Next year, we are gonna put up brighter lights and we're gonna replace the wreaths and the trees. The employee Christmas luncheon was held at the convention center on the 17th. We had door prizes donated from various companies. And then I've also been asked about the New Year's fireworks. I guess in the past, we used to do that. We do plan on doing that for next year. Sorry, it's my first time speaking.
Thank you.
I also wanted to ask if you guys will see me after the meeting and have documents for all of you to sign. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. How many employees are we down? How many vacancies do we have, like across the city?
Ms. Laimo, would you like to answer that?
I'll add something like it up there if you don't mind.
Okay. I was just curious.
I forgot to mention, thank you for all your work on the Christmas, Christmas event. I get a lot of compliments on that. It was a wonderful event. Moving on to agenda item number 13, city manager report. Mr. Liz?
Before I begin, let me address Councilman Douglas's question. If you'll forgive me how I'm gonna say this, the answer to your question is really subjective. It depends upon the perspective in which we look at this. Based upon the way the current city is cut up and the departments are cut up, we're down about 10 total people. And that's, that's what we would need based upon the way the city is cut up. If we restructured the city a totally different way, we'd probably be right on task. So it seems a little differently saying we'd be right on task if we restructured one way versus another, but that's kind of like the olden days when public works used to be everything, parks, streets, sewer, water, you know, all that stuff. You had a director and you had a bunch of people just underneath him, so you took all your people and you said, okay, today you all are gonna work here, okay? So we don't have that because of how we've cut it up. So we have about 19, 20 people that would be considered public works if we pulled them all under one roof and that would be more than ample to run the city at that point. But because of how we've cut it up, we're down about 10.
Are, are a lot of our employees cross-trained, especially like in, you know, public works, parks, you know, things that way, you know, in events where we have a lot of turnover or, you know, if 10 people came in tomorrow and turned in resignations, you know, do we have people cross-trained to be able to shift around or they pretty much set in there?
We do have some people that are, that are highly trained and cross-trained in different things. For example, we've got a couple of people at our plants who can go into the field and actually very competently replace lines and do leaks and things of that nature, okay? Just like we have people in our parks who can jump to the streets or people from the streets who can jump to the parks. One of the things, and when I, when we brought Mr. Perades on, one of the tasks I've charged him with because he's a TWU instructor is to ensure that all the people who work in water and sewer are completely cross-trained. So that is one of the things we are working towards is ensuring that as we bring people on, we're tasking them with, okay, you're gonna work water, you're gonna work sewer and then, okay, whoops, let's flip the coins, you're gonna work water now and you're gonna work sewer now. And making sure they know both of what's going on and, and we're rotating people through. So we are working towards completely cross-training in these sections and then we're gonna counter-cross training between some people who identify who are in parks and streets that we think could be good working in the field over here as well and cross-training them over there. Currently, right now, the way it would work is if, is if we need to pull somebody from parks and streets, they would probably be limited to maybe their expertise of maybe doing tobacco, operating tobacco or something like that while the other guys were down in the hole, so to speak, fixing the leak and that kind of thing. So we do have, we can pull if we have to have to. We're, we're not in dire straits in a way. And one of the other things I felt to tell you all when I introduced Mr. Perades, and that's my fault, sometimes I get a little ahead of myself and I apologize to y'all for that. Mr. Perades holds a double A license, an A water and an A sewer. So he, he has the top licensing for TCEQ, WMB licenses in our city, so he holds an additional license, so just to let you all know. Okay? Any other questions on that that I could maybe throw out there? Did I cover your questions good enough for you? All right, just want to make sure I did. All right, very good then. Okay, so we've got a, a lot going on in the city, sort of. We've got a couple of grant projects moving forward and we've got the GLO grant for the water transmission line, we've got a CWG grant over off of Live Oak and Waco going on. The East Main project, just waiting on a walk-through about the city, so Councilman Rodriguez. I know that we were waiting on Councilman Parker and that, I don't know when Councilman Parker's gonna be available at this time. So if you don't mind, I'll pick a date and a time that's good by you and then I'll communicate to Councilman Parker and make sure it's good with him and that he can tell me whether we can go without him or wait for him. Would that be okay with you?
By the way.
Because we do need to get that walkthrough done from our perspective so we can release the contractor.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. The sewer line grant project on Live Oak and Waco, Mr. Swine was in the audience tonight. We're gonna get to that a little bit later on, but we, we did have the bid opening and the awarding will be later tonight. And then the issuance of the notice, notice to proceed, those are the next two steps is awarding the contract tonight and then issuing the notice to proceed so they can begin construction on that. The Crizo water line, so we have the water wells dug, 17 and 18 are dug, they're done, they're complete. Weizinger's contract on that was, included them installing the motors, the pump motors. However, we are nowhere near ready for those motors to go in the ground. So what we've done is that Weizinger doesn't want to have this contract remain open until we get there. And given the timelines, the GLO is proposing versus the timelines I proposed on this being done, we're about three years apart. What we have talked to Weizinger about was very simply this. Weizinger is gonna house the motors for the City of Kennedy. They're gonna hold on to them. And then they're gonna come back when we get this project to the point where the motors need to go into the wells. And they're gonna come back and they're gonna install the motors with no additional charge to the city. The trade-off for doing that is we're releasing them from the project and we're paying them the retainage. And then the trade-off for all of that is a document I have to get to Ms. Gad, is a notarized letter from the president of Weizinger saying he's gonna do all this for us. So I got Weizinger committed on paper to come back and do this as a condition of us releasing them so they won't have an open contract until we get to that point. But the motors are in, they're being housed and Weizinger has committed to take care of it for us because it was part of their original contract. Okay, so that's, that's kind of where we are on that. I talked to Mr. Berger. He's really close to getting the renditions and the revisions done on the convention center remodeling that's going on. He did want to do one little thing for you all, the council and for the residents that he thought would help bring it to life a little bit. He wanted to add the little tables and all that kind of stuff on the inside, so I talked and says, well, go ahead and do all that and get back with me. We'll schedule a workshop. So just waiting on him to get finished adding all his little fine details he wants to add. Soon as he does that, we'll get a workshop set up and we'll get in front of you guys, in front of the residents, so y'all can look at the renditions and see where we are on that. Okay? And then like Mr. Perades was saying, the eight-inch water line, it's, it's, it's moved along. Tierra Leece has already run the pipe on the front side on 181, they've already covered it back over. We've already got the water hydrant installed on the side side of the project, so it's moving quite long. It should be done before too long and then we should be able to release Tierra Leece on that. Okay? Operations, there's some things going on right now. I know if you all are staying abreast of what's in the news and that, but when this whole coronavirus thing started, they just called it COVID-19 or the novel coronavirus. And then they broke out the Greek alphabet and started going down it and the next thing you know, we got an Alpha and an Omega and a Delta and all these names and now we're down to Omicron on this. What we're finding out, or should I say, let me rephrase it, what they're finding out is that this particular variant, the Omicron variant, is not as severe in nature as Delta was, but it is extremely more transmissible than Delta ever was. And it does not matter whether you're fully vaccinated, boosted, unvaccinated, it does not matter what your vaccine status is, it is making breakthrough cases like crazy across not just the nation, but the world. Just to give you an idea, at 1:40 today, I went on the DSHS website tonight before coming into council, the numbers reported for today, January the 11th at 1:40 PM on DSHS website, 46,975 brand-new cases of the coronavirus just in Texas. In Karnes County today, we had 127 brand-new cases just this month total. We had 64 cases just yesterday, we had four new cases today. So it's, it's moving very quickly. The symptoms of Omicron mimic the symptoms of the old coronavirus, but they also mimic the symptoms of the flu and allergies as well. So it's become one of these variants that has, has really adapted to things. The old, the old adage that a parasite will not kill off its host so that it can continue to live, because if it kills off all its hosts, it'll die out. So we have this going. The reason I even bring this up is due to the massive spreading of the coronavirus, especially the Omicron variant. Governor Abbott rescinded his order last year where municipalities could mandate masks throughout their cities. And that's exactly what that mandate was. It was approval from Governor Abbott that we as a, we as a government body could tell everybody in Kennedy, every business in Kennedy, you have to do masks. And he rescinded that to where we could no longer do that. But he left the door open for each business and each building as their own entity to make their own decisions on masks. So Walmart can say you have to wear a mask and they're not in violation of the governor's order. We're fixing to reinstitute a mask mandate at City Hall. I'm fixing to make it mandatory beginning tomorrow that masks must be worn in all common areas and meetings rooms in City Hall. And this is for the protection of our residents and our employees. With this thing spreading the way it's spreading, we went through this about a year and a half ago and it really, you know, we were kind of ahead of the curve and we managed it very well, but this thing is spreading very quickly. We've already got four people out on COVID right now and some people just went out even today. So I just want to let everybody know that as well within our purview and authority to mandate here in City Hall that people wear masks in the common areas and I will be putting that up tomorrow, putting it on the website so people know. So I just wanted to let you all know that it's because of this, this spreading of this vaccine status notwithstanding, it'll be mandatory for everybody. So additionally, moving on from that, I received an email. You know, many of you know we have a GLO grant for the water line. Interesting thing is, I got a, an email from the TDEM, Texas Department of Emergency Management. Apparently FEMA has a grant funding opportunity, a hazardous mitigation grant program, DR 4485, and it's for the COVID-19 pandemic. So this is a brand-new disaster relief program. All you have to be is in a declared disaster county and Karnes County is one of those counties that is eligible to receive funds from this. We have until April 29th to submit an application for this. And some of the eligible activities we can use the funds for is property acquisition, structure demolition, mitigation reconstruction, flood proofing, generators, flood risk reduction projects, safe room construction, just name a few things. There's, there's a whole nice list here and I'll, I'll actually print this off and email to you guys. If you guys have a copy of this, you don't have to go look it up. But we are gonna be looking at more grant opportunities for the city along those lines through this particular DR grant, so. Any questions about any of that? Moving on to our finances. We start on the left-hand side, available liquidity like, like we always do. We have 2.9 in the general fund, 1.0 in the hotel motel tax fund, about 853,000 in the water sewer fund, 2.4 in the paving fund. We have about 7.31 million total in our investment account, our textbook account. At the time we printed the financials, we had 2.2 million dollars of cash in the bank. It, it needs to go without saying about 415,000 of that is our tranche, our first tranche for our ARPA funds, is still there. So we had total liquidity of 9.5 million dollars, which gives us 7.05 months of expenditures that we could pay. So we're a pretty liquid organization right now, doing pretty good there. Our revenues for December in the general fund, $736,000, brings our total to 2.156 million for the year so far, which is about 27.18% of our budget. We were, as of December, pegging to 25% because it was the quarter mark. So we're outperforming our budget on revenues in the general fund by about 2.1%. The general fund spent $558,000 in December, total of 1.6 million for the year, which is about 20.3... is about 20.36%. Again, we're pegging to 25%. So again, on expenditures, we spent less than what we took in, and we're about 5% outperforming our budget there, so the general fund is looking real good there. Water and sewer account took in about 534,000, 1.96 million for the year so far, which is It's down about a percent and a half, pegging off the 25%, but we're still right around the 25% total for revenues. The water and sewer spent 484,000, and we have 1.5 million for the year. It's about 18.27%. It's outperforming the budget by about 7%. So we're still in pretty good shape. Overall, we're outperforming our budget, total revenues and expenditures so far for the first quarter of our fiscal year, so. Any questions about the finances? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number 14, Consent Agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council but where little or no discussion is anticipated by a single motion, second, and affirmation majority vote. Items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item A, Consideration and Approval, Special City Council Meeting Minutes of October 18th, 2021, Workshop City Council Meeting Minutes of October 18th, 2021, Regular City Council Meeting Minutes of November 9th, 2021, and Regular City Council Meeting Minutes of December 14th, 2021. Item B, Consideration and Approval on Financials. Are there any questions or discussion on Agenda Item Number 14? If there are none, I would, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 14.
Motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Sines. And Ms. Mals, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Under Ordinance Resolution, Other Action Items, this section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. Agenda Item Number 15, Consideration and Possible Recommendation for a Request to Vacate and Replat in the City of Kennedy, Karnes County, Texas. And being a plat creating Lot 1 and Lot 2 in the Cardona subdivision of the City of Kennedy, Texas, Karnes County, Texas, a subdivision plat of .40 acres of land within the city limits of Kennedy out of the Carlos Martinez 15 LEAK Grant Abstract Number 6, Karnes County, Texas, and being the land described in a conveyance to Antonio Cardona in the deed of record and document 2018-0002, not 797 of the official records of Karnes County, Texas, to be further known as 412 Mixon Street and 416 Mixon Street. And we have a presentation on this for Mr. Albion.
In your package, you'll see a copy of the map of the vacate replat on Mr. Cardona. This property here was submitted to the Plant and Zoning Commission January the 6th last week for approval, and the P&amp;Z did approve the vacate replat. So now we're submitting it to City Council for final approval. Right now, the property owner wanted to vacate replat for possible development of the property of Lot 2. So in order to do that, they had to split the property and be able to have separate utilities, separate addresses, and so forth. So it did get approved by the Plant and Zoning, and we're submitting it to City Council for final approval.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Albion? Or any discussion on the side? If there are no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 15.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Rodriguez. Ms. Mals, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Number 16, Consideration and Possible Recommendation for a Request to Vacate and Replat in the City of Kennedy, Karnes County, Texas, and being a parcel of land in Block 4, Lot A7-1 and Lot A7-2 in the Levi-Poland New Mexican subdivision of the City of Kennedy, Texas, Karnes County, Texas, out of the Carlos Martinez 15 LEAK Grant Abstract 6, Karnes County, Texas, as shown on the plat of record in volume 122, page 106 of the deed records of Karnes County, Texas, and to be further known as 100 Snocom Street and 102 Snocom Street. Mr. Albion?
The same with the previous one. This was submitted to Plant and Zoning Commission January the 6th for approval. P&amp;Z did approve a replat. As far as we know, the property owner does intend to develop the property in the near future, but in order for them to do that, they also had to split the property to get separate utilities, separate addresses. So now we're submitting it to City Council for final approval for the vacate replat on Snocom Street.
Any questions or discussion from the council on Agenda Item Number 16? Is there a motion on Agenda Item Number 16?
Go ahead and make a motion to approve Item 16.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Mals, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 17, Consideration and Possible Recommendation for a Request to Vacate and Replat of Lot 4A, Block 34, in Kennedy Edition of the Carlos Martinez 15 LEAK Grant Abstract Number 8, in the City of Kennedy, Texas, Karnes County, Texas, as shown on the plat of record in Cabinet A, page 149 of the deed records of Karnes County, Texas, and to be further known as 202 South 6th Street. Mr. Albion?
Same thing, basically, the owner, the owner of this property had a, I guess, an extended, larger backyard, and they went ahead and wanted to know if they could sell that property, if they could only sell the property, and they went ahead and vacated her portion. And so we submitted that to the general, to the Plant and Zoning Commission January the 6th. It did get approved, meets all requirements and regulations. Now we're asking the City Council to give the final approval for the vacate replat on 6th Street.
Any questions or discussion on Agenda Item Number 17? Is there a motion on Agenda Item Number 17?
I'll make a motion to approve Item Number 17.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Sines and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Mals, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 18, Consideration and Possible Action on a Variance Request of the Code of Ordinance Chapter 90, Zoning Section 90-10C, Height and Area Regulations 2, to allow the encroachment of four, four foot into 25, 25-foot front building setback as established by the City of Kennedy, location being known as 124 Karnes Street. Mr. Albion?
This one here also was submitted to the Plant and Zoning Commission January 6th. If you look at your packet, you'll have a little diagram there of a potential business that's going to be going up on 124 Karnes Street. The gentleman has put a portable building there, but now he's wanting to extend and attach to that portable building. And in order for him to do that, he's encroaching at least four feet on that front building setback. If you look at the diagram, it's a four-foot building setback. We went over there, we did an inspection of the property. With that extension, we won't see any kind of encroachment or any kind of, any kind of encroachment or any kind of obstruction of view of either oncoming traffic, either from the side road or from the front road. So with that extension, we did advise him that he had to go in front of the zoning commission for approval for that encroachment to build in that setback. The P&amp;Z evaluated the case, and they went ahead and approved the encroachment on the setback. So now we're asking the City Council for final approval on that encroachment in that And we also did send notifications within everybody within 200 feet to see if they had any objections. We did have a couple of people that showed up inquiring about what was going on, and we explained to those concerned citizens what the situation was, and they had no problem with it, so.
Any questions or discussion on Agenda Item Number 18? If there are no questions or further discussion, is there a motion on Agenda Item Number 18?
Make a motion to approve Item 18.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Mals, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 19, Consideration and Possible Action in regard to Ordinance 21-01, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, ordering the May 7th, 2022, general election for the mayor and council member for districts 2 and 4, providing for early voting, providing for other matters relating to the election, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
So it's that time of year. This year, we have seats two for a mayor up at our general election, so we have to just formally order in the election. As the City of Kennedy also partners with Karnes County's Election Board for them to host it, that's also like last year, that's built into the ordinance as well to go ahead and authorize the city manager to move forward and effect the contract with them so that we can just carry it down in one motion. So that's what this one is all about. Okay? Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Or any discussion regarding Agenda Item Number 19? If there are no questions or discussion, is there a motion for Agenda Item Number 19?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 19.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Mals, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 20, Consideration and Possible Action in regard to awarding the construction contract pertaining to the TXCBBG Sewer Project Number 7220229 at Waco and Live Oak to Dirt Boys Incorporated for the not to exceed bid amount of $245,655 to be completed not later than 90 calendar days from issuance of the notice to proceed directing and authorizing the mayor to sign and effect the contract between the City of Kennedy and Dirt Boys Incorporated. Mr. Lynn and Mr. Swain?
So to council recall, we got that Texas CBBG grant, we were unaware that it was going to come through, and it came through. Mr. Swain was six S engineering, was the original engineer on the contract. It was pretty shocking, and I reached out to him and said, hey, guess what? We didn't know we were getting it. So he's been spearheading everything for us. He held the bid opening, we advertised for the bids, he helped with the opening. Packet details, all the bid documents that are there. Dirt Boys, with whom we do have experience in the City of Kennedy, came in as the low bid of 245,655. So that's what's here, is for you guys to go ahead and authorize the contract so we can move forward with that. But Mr. Swain is here, if you all have any specific questions, if y'all would like to ask him, so.
Was Dirt Boys the only?
Mr. Swain? I'll let Mr. Swain take the question.
I'll step aside. Do you want to do these on? Yes, sir, I've got them, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Swain.
Howdy. I want to thank you for allowing me to help out over here in Kennedy. I'm from Tilden, I live between Pleasant and Corvusville, so I call myself pretty much local. But we had three bidders on this project. The Dirt Boys was the apparent low bidder at 245,655. Westar Construction, they're a company outside of Austin-Birchwood area up there, but they've been doing a lot of work down in this region, specifically in McMullen County. I've done some work with them. The only one that I didn't know was the Miller Brothers. They are a big company, and their number, the Westar came in at 269,950, .50, and Miller Brothers came in at 428,485. So I did make a call to them because, for one, I wanted to know who they were. It's just a kind of due diligence, checking these companies out. And I asked them, you know, why was your number so far in the engineering estimates? Which engineering estimate was 237,300? So Dirt Boys wasn't too far, you know, but a number like 428,000 is way out of line. They talked about pipe and materials and having a hard time here in the upcoming months to get a hold of those materials, but the other two contractors didn't seem to have the same opinion, so we'll see, see who's right. But we went with Dirt Boys because they do have some experience here. I talked to a man named Russell over there, that's one of their, I guess, is he the owner of that company?
He's primary.
He's the primary contact, so I want to make sure I got the right name. And so that's why I went with them for the recommendation, and we look forward to working in the field. We are director of public works doing construction administration to help this project be successful.
Any questions from the council?
We haven't had any issues, right, with Dirt Boys that I'm aware of, so.
No, sir. I will tell you this, they're the ones that spearheaded East Main, and every time we've said something to them about stuff, they fixed it. They're also the same group that did Graham Road. So they've already done a couple of road projects here in town, so.
Some positive experience.
Yes.
Any other questions from the council or any discussion on the side? If not, then I would entertain a motion on Agenda Item Number 20.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 20.
I'll second it.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, excuse me, and Councilmember, a second from Councilmember Rodriguez. Ms. Mals, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Agenda Item 21, Consideration and Possible Action for the City of Kennedy to sponsor a table for the designer bag bingo, defending the Escondido Creek Park, to be held on February 3rd, 2022. Mr. Lynn?
How do I start with this one? Somewhere in my foggy memory, I want to say last year you all did this, and maybe you did, maybe you didn't, let's be, I need to be clear about that. I do not recall that we did it. When we were approached by this, we performed all of our due diligence to see if we ever did anything like this, and we could not link anything to it. I will tell you this, this comes from some people in the community with the Escondido Parkway, and they're looking at it as a donation to Escondido Parkway. I can tell you, and Ms. Gad is here, she'll probably agree, hopefully, that the city cannot donate money, and I, that's my stance on it. Okay? I was asked to do this, my answer is completely no on this because of that fact. However, don't let it break through the council, let the council make the final decisions. You are the ultimate say in the city on things, so. But that is what this is all about. Apparently, you buy tickets, the money goes Escondido Parkway, you have a table, and then they bring handbags around, and you play bingo with them or for them or something like, I have no clue. I'm sorry, I'm not good at this, I don't know. So anyway, that's why I said, and that's about all I know about this, so.
So if we purchase a table, it's like a corporate table?
If you purchase, right, if you purchase.
So page 164 of your packet outlines what the proceeds go for in regards to Escondido and So page 164 of your package outlines what the proceeds go for in regards to Escanito, and what they're fundraising for. Page 165 has a breakdown of the table sizes and the options that are available for purchase for the fundraising portion of it. And then 166 is just kind of a flyer for the event that's being hosted. So it doesn't have to be a table, it can be just like a set number of tickets for a spot when we open the event, and all proceeds either are put overseas and entered. Is that something you can do? Because I don't.
Yeah, that was my question. I mean, I'm.
We as a municipality are not allowed to donate money, okay? Now, I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to say the city attorney's here, and I address the city attorney.
Any questions?
I would have to know more details about the event, but generally, the underestimation of the Texas Constitution, that would still count kind of as a donation, which is a purchase of those chairs that are to be held for a charity.
And donation of that type is prohibited by law?
It is, yes. I mean, let's just know, there might be different things within the event that the city could do, I would just need to know more details, an outright donation or purchase of that kind.
Could the city provide some sort of in-kind support for the event?
The city could, I would have to think about that a little bit more.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, I know, I think we'd all like to show our support for the event, it's a wonderful event, it raises a lot of funds.
I'm going to be honest, I already bought a table.
What's that?
Yeah.
Of course, on behalf of the city.
Can I remember?
And that is one of the options, each of us could make that choice.
Now I have to find the six friends.
Using our own dollars, as opposed to the city's dollars, so. Well, like I said, I wish there was some way we could support the event, but it sounds like, and I think it's always a good idea to follow our legal advice, that doing so would put us in jeopardy, so we want to avoid that at all costs, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to end up having an executive session a month or two from now.
Let's try to stay out of trouble as much as possible.
No action.
Well, any further questions or discussion on agenda item number 21? Any motions regarding agenda item 21?
I'll make a motion to take no action.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Science, take no action on agenda item number 21. Moving on to agenda item 22.
Want to take one?
Oh, yes, sorry, Ms. Mous, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item 22, consideration of possible action regarding allocating the remaining unused American Rescue Plan Act funds to city personnel as premium pay for working during the coronavirus pandemic. Mr. Lynn and also Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes. Okay, so Councilman Rodriguez had come to me, and in confidence, we had talked about some things regarding this, and I liked everything he had to say. When we received the ARPA funds, one of the approved expenditures was what they call premium pay for employees. However, when we did an evaluation of our greatest needs in the city, our employees and our team are always up there, but we needed generators so that we could supply water so that what happened during Yuri would never happen again in the city. We originally were getting around $750,000 in two tranches. We got blessed with a little extra, and it boosted up to $830,000. So the council approved to go ahead and buy the generators, which we've done, we've got a generator, we've got the main generator for the RO plant, soon to be here, we've got the pads laying for all the generators to electric run, and it'll just be a matter of purchasing the other generators. So after talking to Councilman Rodriguez, I crunched a lot of numbers, and I came up with the following set of numbers. We had $830,000 and some change, and so I'm going to use as many round numbers as I can, so we'll say $830,000. We're spending approximately $681,000 of that for the generators and installation, so that money's already allocated, and that leaves us a balance of $149,000 that's unallocated of these ARPA funds. Now, the caveat to these ARPA funds is that we have to expend them. So we have $149,000 that's going to be sitting out there in my land doing absolutely nothing. Based upon conversations that I have with Mr. Rodriguez, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, giving as much of that to the team for their efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic, which we are still technically under, is the most prudent way to spend that money. So what I did was, I said, we have $149,000 left, how many active employees do we have as of the council meeting tonight? We have 46 total employees as of the council meeting tonight. It does include a couple of new hires that started within the last 10 days. I personally don't think it would be ethical to exclude them, but you all are going to make this decision. I divided the 46 people by the $149,000, by the 46. That comes out to, and I rounded it to even numbers, that comes out to a maximum award amount per employee of $3,200. I divided the $3,200 by 2080, because that's the number of hours a full-time person is scheduled to work 40 hours a week times 52 weeks a year. That comes out to $1.53 an hour. So we would essentially, in a one-month sum payment of $3,200, be giving every employee of the City of Kennedy $1.53, an hour of premium pay for their work. So this includes everybody all across the board. Now, since we have not written any checks as of today, and we are getting the second tranche in Mayor June of this year, the funds are available, we'll go ahead and issue those funds to the employees this week. So what I'm bringing to you is, the maximum number would be $3,200. It's up to you guys to decide any number up to that, if you so desire. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask me about this or anything?
Would this be essentially a bonus?
No, it is technically not a bonus. This does not fall in the bonus category, it's considered premium pay.
But it's retroactive, this is for work that they've done?
Well, what we're looking at is all the employees that are here, we've got the money, we can say you can have this for having worked during the pandemic, and of course, we still are in the pandemic.
This is a way of us, like I discussed with Mr. Lynn, is our employees have gone through a lot of hard times this past year and a half with COVID, just like everybody else has. And I just felt that, you know, if there was a way that we could work it out to let them know that we care about them and that we appreciate them working through this for us, and he agreed totally, and I think it's the right thing to do.
I agree, I mean, especially, we were severely impacted by the COVID and other, I mean, city employees have taken in all sides over the past year, so I think it's an excellent idea. Obviously, we're still struggling with employee retention issues, you know, it's like I said, it's a way to make them feel appreciated, and they are appreciated, and I think it's a great idea.
Very much so. And just to cover all the basics, the stat, if I'm speaking correctly, that it is in pre-temperature?
Yes.
Okay. Any good advice?
I have a quick question. The approximate $681,000, is, if we give the full $149 to all the staff, the generators and everything, installation, that's all covered, right?
Right, and the $681, that includes everything, because the one great thing that Mercer did when he put this together was he gave allowances for the engineering, for installations, for everything. He covered everything. He even fought for the city to make sure we got the quoted prices when we approved it, because prices were going up on the generators, so he kept the prices low for us.
It's locked in.
Was that four?
That was, one for each of the outlined wells and one for the RO, so yeah, it was four or five generators, off the top of my head. Now, that will leave a balance of $1,800 at the $3,200 level, okay? That we can funnel, we can just leave it there until we pay for everything with the generators, and then we can see what's left over after that, and we can reallocate what's left back there.
Okay. One more question for.
Yes, sir.
Hypothetically, if the council approved $3,200 for each of the 46 current employees, how would that, from the perspective of the city employee, would that be an increase to their next paycheck, or will it be split up, or?
We can issue that check tomorrow to them.
A separate check?
A separate check tomorrow, deposit in their bank account, just like we did the longevity pay.
I think that's the best way to go, because that just shows them that, you know, this is your payroll check, this is what the council did for you.
Yeah, and I agree with that wholeheartedly, that doing it separate like that sends a message we get.
Any further questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. There are no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion that we approve the $3,200 for each of our employees in the American Relief Program funds, I'll take them out of there.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Rodriguez, a second from Councilmember Science. Ms. Mous, if you will call the roll.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number 23, consideration of possible action to ratify an appointment, the appointment of an emergency management coordinator as of October 1st, 2021. Chief Ash?
Mr. Swain, thank you. So this is a requirement by TD, what is TD?
TD.
Texas Emergency Management, that we, every year, we have to reappoint our emergency management coordinator for the city. Since I've been here, I've been had in that position, as the emergency management director for the city, so we need to reappoint me if that's your decision. I think I'm the form I put, that the assistant, Chief Ryan, Department of Fire, so far as I'm aware, it's a requirement, so every year we have to reappoint, so that's what we do. If you wish to go that way, or if you wish to appoint somebody else, we can change.
Any questions with the chief? Any further discussion? There are no more questions or further discussion? Is there a motion on agenda item number 23?
I'll make a motion to appoint Chief Ash, the emergency management coordinator for the City of Kennedy.
I'll second.
Motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Science. Ms. Mous, if you will call the roll.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number 24, consideration of possible action regarding ratifying acceptance of donations for the City of Kennedy employee Christmas luncheon and issuing thank you letters to the donors. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, now, normally, we would have a limit of $1,000 that we would bring to you guys and say, hey, would you all accept this donation? And then you would say yes, and we'd tell you what it's for, and then we would take the donation and spend it for that, because it becomes restricted funds. And then we would send a thank you letter like we did the one time to the people where you all sign off on it, so they can use for their taxes and that. But for this Kennedy Christmas party, some of the donations came in were well below the $1,000 threshold, but it's a good PR thing, I believe that those people, those partners that we use that donated this stuff, we need to show our thanks and appreciation to them as well. So that's what this item provides for you all, just to approve the donations retro, in retrospect, because we didn't have a dollar in mind at the council meeting, because they were still flowing in last month, so. And then tonight, you all can sign the letters, and we'll get those mailed out to each of the donors that contributed to our party, which was a huge success. Thanks to you guys. And I do want to stop and say thank you to the council and the mayor for permitting us once again this year to have that, and the employees really did enjoy it, they had a great time. If you were unable to attend, I really wish you could have been there and seen them, they had, they were laughing, giving them, having fun, which is what it's all about, so.
Any questions for Mr. Lynn regarding this agenda?
I.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any further discussion on agenda item number 24? There are no further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 24.
Good motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Science. Ms. Mous, if you will call the roll.
Councilwoman Science?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number 25, consideration and possible action to discuss ideas regarding St. Mary's Park enhancements. Presenter on this is Councilwoman Rodriguez.
I mentioned this at our last meeting, because I've had several of my constituents approach me about that little park that we have up there between Golia and Oasis Street, and I just wanted to toss the ball around to see, you know, about how we can improve it this year, you know, because we have been sitting on this ball for a while, you know. A lot of people in the neighborhood would like to have a place where some people can't get to our park over here, so they live in that area, they would like to exercise there, but they're afraid, you know, because there's no light, you know, and, I mean, we need to make it look more like a park, you know, and I think that that's something that we need to concentrate on this coming year, you know. A lot of cities, Beville is one, they have their big park where all their baseball fields are on one side of town, and then they have one downtown where the old Wieners used to be, you know, right across the street, and it's nice, I mean, it's got a little ramp for the skateboarders, it's got swings, it's got, and it's got nightlight, you know, so that's, that's one of the reasons, like I said, that I've had Mr. Lynn put this on the agenda.
Joe still here? Would you like to address what you're working on so far with that, with them, please?
I know I've been at a few of the Parks and Rec meetings, and we've thrown around different ideas. We've talked about what else is going to take place out there at this walking park, and some of the stuff that was left over or was dedicated for that is actually over there in the warehouse, where they store all the water lines and everything else for the public work. They have, I believe it's like six benches that are dedicated to it, six trash can receptacles, I believe it's maybe three or four picnic tables. That's pretty much the extent of what we have available for it right now, and I know they've kind of changed some of the dimensions of the walking trail and some of the areas. Basically, it's been due to the horn toads, or the, this is like the horn toad thoroughfare. They do have, TCU University comes down, every so often, they go out there and they do their study on the horn toads. They've actually come here the last couple of times that they've visited, and they've said that there aren't any horn toads actively in that block area, but it's a thoroughfare from where they're coming down from somewhere in between St. Mary's and Capano, coming across to, towards Noises and going towards Boo Street. So they've located SCAD and all kinds of other stuff from horn toads. So that's been one of the, one of the key deals on some of the mowing that we do in that area. I know based on, from what the Parks and Recs, and I believe Dr. Phelps as well, is like, he's like into this big time, and he doesn't like for us to mow below like four inches and then around the trees and stuff like that, he doesn't like to see it weeded any lower than roughly a foot. So it, when it gets overgrown, I know we received several complaints about it starting to look kind of, you know, look pretty bad and stuff, so we go over there and try to make it look as aesthetically pleasing. make it look as aesthetically pleasing as possible, but due to certain things that with TCU, Dr. Phelps, Parks and Recs, we were going over there, and as soon as we get an opportunity with all the other projects that we have lined up, and we're just going to take our skid steer and go back, because you can see, there's a divining, a defined outline of where the walkway used to be. I believe they had put some kind of base material or something in there years ago, and over time, it's kind of just been grown over with, with weeds and everything else. But since the, I guess, the first time it was done, they've actually moved where the walking trail is going to be now, just due to the fact of where they have, I guess, like certain ant mounds that the horn toads feed on, stuff like that. So, I have a little map here in front of me, and this is the latest map that I received from Parks and Recs, to where we're not going on the boundaries of what it was before. So, this is kind of a updated version of where they want to see the trails run through, and we have to do a lot of the manicuring on, on some of the trees and stuff like that, that have kind of got some underbrush on them, to where they need to be kind of cleaned out. But we do have certain things. As far as lighting, no, there, you're right, there's no lighting out there. It is a vacant lot for the most part. People just use it to cut across from when they're walking and stuff like that. I have, because I actually live on St. Mary's down the street from this location right here. I do see people from time to time, not very many, but there are some people from time to time, that just go and walk the perimeter. On this one, it shows the perimeter, and there's actually a middle section in there as well, that they could use, but as far as anything else, that's basically what we have available. We did talk about anchoring, you know, the picnic tables down and cementing the benches and stuff like that, just so things don't tend to walk off. The one thing that we did talk about, and I did express concern, was, was once we put these, these picnic tables on the ground, just like anything else, with the soils and with the, whatever it is, whether it's just the steel underneath, it's going to end up kind of, started to deteriorate just from, from the corrosion, you know, sitting there with the rain and everything else. So, I mentioned to them, eventually, I don't know if they'd like to put some kind of concrete pads or something, to where they're sitting and resting on, to where they don't kind of deteriorate.
That's what I would suggest, to build pads and then chain them to the, to the pads, you know, so, because picnic tables will walk off too, you know. And I would like to see if we can look into safety lights, you know, that, I know we have streetlights all over town, you know, if we could get some put in there, you know. I mean, we just add it to our, you know, we'll call it a streetlight, but it's inside, in the park, you know, in that area, you know, see how much, if that's cheaper, you know, putting some lighting in there, you know. I know the neighborhood would appreciate it, you know, because that cuts down on crime too, you know, when, when a place is lit up, you know, that they're apt not to try to do something when there's light in there, you know. I just, did we ever get rid of all of our, did poles ever come get all those lights?
We still have, we still have a few of the, the light poles and, and some of the heads out there. They were, were coming like every other day and picking them up, and just, I guess, closer to the holidays, it kind of stopped, and they hadn't resumed. I can, I can get with their public works director, and the guy that was coming back and forth, kind of hauling them. The biggest thing was, is they ended up, they didn't end up getting that lowboy trailer, so they were actually hauling them on a gooseman, and you had...
A lot sticking out.
Ten feet, twelve feet sticking out the, the backside of the trailer, so they were just kind of trying to shadow me.
Possibility, you know, if they've taken what they want, they want, you know, and they don't want the rest, I mean, of course, we, we don't need to put them as high as we had them at the baseball fields, you know, make them a little lower, you know, but those were, those were still good lights, you know. If they don't want, you know, we could apply them to that park.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Does that, is there water there by that park?
Yeah. It's out in the street, we'd have to tap, we'd have to make a tap and set a meter there.
Because I was thinking about like a water fountain or something.
Yeah, we have an eight inch meter, I mean, an eight inch main on St. Mary's.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think anything we can do out there would be a good start.
Because I know the other, the other question that Parks and Recs, and I'm probably overstepping when I'm talking for Parks and Recs, was, was the funding, you know, as far as the funding for the concrete to be poured and stuff like that, because I gave them prices on anchors and just the chains and stuff, you know, kind of some of the fair necessities that they would need in order to put the picnic tables down and stuff like that, before we end up doing full-on paths for, for everything to rest on. But I told them, if nothing else, we could probably put them on skids for now, and then as, as funding comes available, possibly move forward forming them out and pouring concrete on, you know, whatever we need.
But we can also approach 4B, because that is considered a park.
Yes.
We can approach 4B for funding.
What is the size of the park? Is it a full city block?
It's a full city.
Yeah, okay.
Now, on these picnic tables, would we want to put a lean-to or something over them? Cover or something?
Yeah, like you're, right.
So, that you're sitting under shade?
Yeah, because the, the shade is very limited out there, you don't have any insurance. The trees that you have out there are basically kind of...
Yeah, and they're on the edges, on the edges. We basically took everything out of the middle. We had trees there, there used to be a house there a long time, right in the middle of the park.
Oh, wow.
And it got, it burned out.
Maybe get some playground equipment to go up there?
Yeah.
Swing, seesaw, something like that?
Make it look like a park, you know. I don't know if we consider it, you know, but it is a park, so we can ask 4B for money.
I've, I've had several people say the same thing, John, that, that they'd love to see a park in that neighborhood, because it's so far away from our other parks. This is, I like the, the concept of a neighborhood park that's small and accessible, people are more likely to use it. If we just put a little effort into it, I think the neighborhood would really embrace it.
I know Parks and Recs also mentioned kind of those little stand-up, little barbecue pits that we used to have around all the, the little picnic area out there at the park, looking at something like that.
People like those things, because they have their, their picnic table there and their little pit there, other people have other sections of the park.
If they have a special event that's too big for their backyard, then they could, they could set up a...
Right over there, something, just within 100 yards of where they live.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think definitely some children's play equipment, like swing or slide, any, whatever, anything. Because like, like Mayor said, the, the other park's so far away, you know, if you're, if you, if you have to walk from that sort of town to the park, that's a pretty good distance.
Yeah, that's, yeah, good. The only concern and that I get from all this, from listening to the council talk and the Parks and Rec talk, and, and Mr. Hernandez, is, is these horn toads. How is this going to impact the horn toads that don't exist, but that use it as a thoroughfare?
Well, that's what I was wondering about, if the mighty will alter the habitat that they, they use as a migration from the thoroughfare that they're using.
See, I, I want, once I mentioned, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Lubbock, but Lubbock has a thing called Prairie Dog Town. And it's, I mean, you drive like through it, in Buddy Holly Park, you drive through it, and it's prairie dogs over here, and prairie dogs over here, and they go under the road, and you watch them pop out. And I was thinking, well, is there a way, maybe we could do something like, you know, Horn Dog Hollow, and, you know, build something, yeah, you got that, yeah, and build something, you know, around it for the, for the, for them to, the horn toads to have, that's kind of protects them and keeps them out of this area where we're going to have a walking trail and all that kind of stuff.
I cut that area out a lot of times when I was running the city, and I never did see a horn toad up there. I always saw them right here in this alley right here, right behind City Hall.
Maybe TCU would pay for that feature, and then we can put, you know, the TCU logo on it.
Hey.
Or we could just leave a little section out, you know, in the park, you know, that...
Jolene, you have a comment?
Yes, that's a tourist attraction, believe it or not, you cannot believe how many people come into the chamber and want to see horn toads. Even if you can say, go over there, there's a little something over there, that would be wonderful, because right now, now we just moved a great park today, but before, there was nothing, and that's right on the corner, so that's not a bad idea. Coming to the chamber, that's why.
Does this park have a name?
Well, we could, we could call it Horn toad Park. I mean, hey, come on, let's, let's play on everything, you know, and if, then if TCU wants to be a partner with us, I say, go for it.
Not a bad idea.
You know, if they want a ride check, you know, why not?
If there might be a possibility of getting the community involved, or corporate sponsors involved as well, you know, something that we could all kind of pitch in together for, that would be neat. I, I know, I have some people in City Hall that are really good about talking to people about donations. I think I might stick them on them. Some good ideas tonight. Those are really good, I, I like those, Joe. I think, I think that's something we can move forward with up there. So, but we definitely want to partner with TCU, since they come out and they, they're doing the study, we want to, we want to find out what they have to say about how far we can go, and what kind of a habitat or something we can put up there as a tourist attraction or that, so. As well, as well as Dr. Phelps and the Lubbock Horn Toad Club? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, they're very involved in that sort of thing, they could, they could give us some guidance and advice and direction. That way, we can still preserve it, and, and then we can still accomplish getting the park up there as well. So, kind of like Miley Cyrus, the best of both worlds. Okay, don't go there. Any further discussion? Thank you, sir. Is there a motion on agenda item number 25, or is this just for discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, well then, no action on agenda item number 25. Moving on to agenda item number 26, items to consider for placement on future agendas, governing body, city manager, city attorney. Does anyone have any items for placement?
We need to reschedule the workshop.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. Mr. Lynn, what would you recommend as a way to expedite trying to do what we were intending to do yesterday? The, the issue with that, and I can nip this in the bud real fast, is that the code says they are an advisory board, and that's what the code says they are, but they have been transacting like they have spending authority. That's really the only thing we needed to get through yesterday, was how do we want, do we want to keep them as an advisory board, or do we want to make them a city deal to where they, they have spending authority? And Mr. Hernandez has the Parks Department, so, you know, they would then fall way underneath that. I, I really think the code, I reread the code again today, I really think the code is very cut and dry, and I think it's where it really needs to be personally. The quickest way I would say to get around that is, you know, just leave it alone as it is. They've been going and going and going for how many years doing this, and with the current administration that we have, we can kind of manage it a little bit better, because that's what we do, and we can start, we can start putting money in the budgets for their projects, and then they can advise the council like they're supposed to do about these projects. And then we can just spend the money through the budget, through the Parks budget, instead of always having to go to 4B. That was the whole idea of moving them to 4B, was so that 4B could focus on economic development. So, this is another way we can do that. I figured out another way around it. So, you're saying a workshop won't be necessary? If the council wants to let me run with this like this, I don't see the need for a workshop on this, because I figured out another way around it, to let the Parks and Rec Committee continue doing what they're doing, and to push the 4B more towards economic development.
So, they wouldn't have to go on through 4B for funding?
No.
It would be as is, that's quoted.
It would, it would be as is, and what we'll do is, we'll put, what we'll do is, during budget season, we'll bring Ms. Nunez and them in, and talk to them about potential projects, and we'll add that money to the Parks and Recreation's budget amount. That way, as we get to those things, as they make the, as they stand up there and they say, council, we would like to see a slide on Fifth Street, and then we have money in the budget for that, we can move, council says, yeah, we want to do that, and we can go, we can do that. So, this is just, I, I got to thinking about it after last night, I thought this is the quickest way around that, because really, that was, that was my issue with it, was that they're an advisory board, but they've been acting like they have spending authority. So, this is my, this is my solution to it, without us having to have a workshop. Well, it sounds like, yeah, you come up with an administrative solution, and it is, so how does the council feel? Do you still feel like we need a workshop in light of the circumstances?
I don't, I mean, I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
I mean, if, if it works, it works.
Yeah, we could, we could, we can make this work like this.
Works for me.
Keeping things as they are. Right, and then you all still have, you know, the, somebody help me out here, I got...
A warding?
Ward salad, no, ward salad going, I want this person, appointment capabilities, which we're going to have to do anyway, we've got some people coming off and that, so. So, we'll treat it like every other board?
So, basically, just fix things.
Yeah, basically, we just leave it alone, and I've got a workaround that'll work for everybody. Okay, it sounds like we won't need that as a future agenda item. Are there any other future agenda items anyone would like got placed? I did talk to the city attorney about the issue we were having over the holidays, we got it cleared up, what was going on with that, it'll be on the next agenda as a consent item, so that's already going to be taken care of. City attorney and I talked about it, and got through that. Yeah, thank you, Ms. Gaff, for your assistance with that, much appreciated.
Thank you.
Well, if there are no items for placement, we'll move on to agenda item number 27, announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events. Does anyone have any announcements? I do. Yes, sir. I would like to say thank you to the 4B, the city council, the mayor, and the chamber, all for unifying on the Small Business of the Month deal. I think this is a great thing for our community, and I think with the three organizations pulling together and spearheading this, I think it's a, a great show of unity for our residents that they haven't seen in quite some time. So, thank you to all of you all for your willingness to participate in this program. Good, thanks to the chamber, Jolene. Teamwork.
Thank you for asking us to join.
Any other announcements?
The current second Friday breakfast has been canceled.
It's canceled?
Yes.
It was to be hosted at...
It was canceled, it was...
Kill the concerns, okay. Any other announcements? If not, then it is 8:27 PM.
Were you going to follow back on item number 11?
Oh, yes, thank you for reminding me. Yes, let's return to agenda item number 11, the person who we hope might be able to join us was not able to. So, presentation, the Senate of the State of Texas Proclamation Number 151, recognizing Brandon Briones for 10 years of service to the City of Kennedy as councilman. And I'd like to read the proclamation. Senate Proclamation Number 151, whereas the Senate of the State of Texas is pleased to recognize Brandon Briones for his outstanding service as a member of the Kennedy City Council, and to congratulate him on his retirement, and whereas Brandon Briones served as a Kennedy City Council member for 10 years, and he consistently provided Kennedy citizens with valuable civic leadership during his five terms, and whereas, over the course of his membership on the council, Brandon Briones devoted considerable time and energy to helping to meet the needs of the city's residents, he played an important role in improving the city's infrastructure by supporting a variety of water projects, including the replacement of water lines and fire hydrants. Brandon's leadership was key to work on the East Main Drainage Project and the Escondido Creek Parkway, two major undertakings that revamped old infrastructure and helped residents who had been neglected since 1997. And whereas, in addition to his work as a council member, Brandon has served his community as a volunteer fireman and as a member of the Planning and Zoning Board, his effective role as an advocate for safe and reliable public infrastructure will be missed upon his retirement from the Kennedy City Council. And whereas, an exemplary public servant, Brandon Briones is respected and admired by his colleagues and area citizens, and he is truly deserving of recognition for his many accomplishments. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that the Senate of the State of Texas hereby commend Brandon Briones on his exceptional service to the people of Kennedy as a member of the Kennedy City Council, and extend to him best wishes for continued success in all his endeavors, and be it further proclaimed, that a copy of this proclamation be prepared for him as an expression of esteem from the Texas Senate, signed by Texas Senator Judith Zaffarini. So, congratulations to Mr. Briones, we will make sure that he receives this, and we thank him for his service. Brings us to the last item on the agenda, it is 8:30 PM, and we are returning. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.